I will call the special board meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order at seven o'clock. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Pietzow and Alderman Tenza will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call her all?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Present.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Juddy.
Here.
Alderwoman Malize Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have fifteen members present.
Also present is Honored Mayor James Donches and Corporation Council Stephen Bolton. Tonight's sole agenda item is the mayor's annual State of the City address, so I will turn the podium over to the mayor.
Well, first, thank you all for coming. And, well, good evening, President McCarthy, Vice President Wiltshire, members of the Board of Aldermen, school board, fire commissioners, BPW, members of our legislative delegation, our school superintendent Mosley, Police Chief Lavoy, Fire Chief Galoppo, city directors and staff, and community members. I first want to thank my wife, Vicki, who is with me tonight, and our daughter Caroline, and our son and aunt David, and grandson Ajaxak, for all of the love and support that you give me. But before we proceed, let's have a moment of silence for the grieving parents, families, students, teachers, and community members from Parkland, Florida, who suffered a terrible tragedy, another senseless school shooting this past week. Thank you. To all Nashua citizens, when I became mayor two years ago, I called on all Nashuans to come together and join in making Nashua a livable city that works for everyone in every neighborhood. An innovative, energetic, leading 21st century city for young families and for retirees, for children and for parents, for residents of the North End, South Nashua, and the inner city alike. And you are answering the call. We are strengthening our economy by adding jobs with new housing and a revitalized downtown. We're making smart, strategic investments in, by rethinking, rebuilding, and by enhancing our infrastructure. We are fighting the opioid epidemic with all of our might. By focusing on our children from cradle to college and career, we are preparing our children for real life. We are getting involved, and we are staying involved. We've made great progress over the past two years, and the state of our city has never been stronger, but there is still much work to do. Nashua was recently declared the safest city in the U.S. by Walletub and the best place to live in New Hampshire by Money Magazine. Now, such recognitions, many of which we've received over the years, have been earned by Nashuans of today and Nashuans of the past, who have worked together to make Nashua a great city. The Board of Aldermen and I have been successful in working together and in resolving any differences to get real results for the citizens of Nashua. We now have eight new members, joining seven returning members, and I look forward to continuing to work with President Brian McCarthy, Vice President Lori Wiltshire, and with all of our Aldermen and Alderwomen to move our city forward. We've made significant progress in growing our economy. We are adding hundreds of new jobs, 750 at BAE, 100 at UPS, 75 at Prudential Overall Supply, 100 at Boston Billiards, 50 at 44 Franklin Street, and more in the South End at Gateway Hills. New companies have been coming to Nashua. Most recently, Vibes Software and DNP Bio, excuse me, Bio Innovations have joined the growing group of innovation economy companies which have located in Nashua. We've now started with MIT on a project which will help us develop new strategies to grow jobs and add businesses to our city. A team of graduate students and economic development professor Carl Seidman are currently studying Nashua's economy, the mill yard and entrepreneurship in Nashua. Southern New Hampshire University has purchased two buildings at the Nashua Airport and is going to reestablish pilot training there. Makerspace Make-It Labs on Crown Street is booming with new members and new activity. When I, and when I ran for mayor, I committed to new downtown housing and new energy and vitality in the heart of our city. A reinvigorated downtown, including new housing, a restored Nashua riverfront, a performing arts center, additional stores and restaurants, is good for all Nashuans because it will expand our tax base and help pay for infrastructure, for schools, fire, and police protection, and for other services that benefits all Nashuans in every neighborhood. This spring, 200 units of housing will open in the Mill to Housing Conversion on Franklin Street, and 150 units on Bridge Street are now renting. Hundreds of new residents will bring millions of dollars of spendable income to downtown. Clock Tower Place is moving forward with plans to convert the Picker Building to 60 units of new housing, and with plans and has plans to construct from the ground up another 60 units of new housing in the mill yard. Through the work of Paul Shea, Cheryl Linder, and Ben Ruddick, and others from Great American Downtown, and the active support of the Downtown Improvement Committee, we have new vitality and activity downtown, including summer outdoor music festivals, a summer dance party, new holiday lighting, Main Street pianos, an expanded farmer's market, and many other activities. We've seen new and exciting businesses open and succeed in our downtown, including Jajabell's, Camaraderie, The Flight Center, Ariel Moon Yoga, Tail Spinner Brewing Company, and just to name a few. Tail Spinner hasn't opened yet, but will be opening on Factory Street, and Gaucho's Brazilian Steakhouse is opening on Elm. Wine Not has expanded and moved to a larger location on Main Street. Two years ago, we began developing a riverfront master plan for the downtown segment of the Nashua River. The plan, which is now complete, includes continuous riverside walkways connected to Mine Falls Park, enhanced access to the waterfront, and new green spaces and landscaping. We are beginning to make long-term investments so that our downtown Nashua River waterfront can be dramatically improved in its look and feel, and that so the potential of our gem can be realized. The plans for Performing Arts Center on Main Street are also moving ahead. This past November, we asked the voters whether we should undertake this Performing Arts Center project, and their answer was yes. Once the Performing Arts Center is up and running, we will bring tens of thousands of people and millions of dollars to Main Street and downtown. The arts are a significant part of our country's economy, constituting 4.2% of the U.S. gross national product, more than tourism or agriculture. Nashua needs to take greater advantage of the economic benefits we can enjoy from an expanded art scene. Nashua is fortunate to have one-of-a-kind arts organizations and music venues. Positive Street Art and the International Sculpture Symposium have brought new beauty to many corners of Nashua. The Riverwalk Cafe brings premier musicians to Nashua in a cutting-edge downtown venue. And I was proud that this past year, the City of Nashua won the State Art Commission's Creative Community Award for being a hub of the arts in Nashua. Two years ago, we were facing the worsening national opioid crisis. Firefighters and EMTs were responding to 911 overdose calls, and treatment professionals were working to get and keep people in recovery. But we had no coordinated citywide strategy to attack this public health crisis. Now we have taken action and developed a coordinated community response to the epidemic, and we are constantly working to improve our plan of action. In November 2016, we started Nashua's Safe Stations Program, to which over 1,400 people have responded, people seeking to turn hopelessness into recovery. Thank you to NFR and our firefighters, to AMR, Harbor Homes, our hospitals and public health, who have joined together to make this program work. The number of 911 emergency overdose calls is down 24%. We still have tragic overdose fatalities. One death is too many, but we are not seeing rising numbers of fatalities as there have been in some parts of the country stricken by opioids. Our State Stations Program is one that is being used as a prototype. The mayor of Providence recently cited Nashua's successful Safe Stations Program as the model for the similar program they launched earlier this year. The Nashua Police Department is also playing a big role by getting drug dealers off our streets. The Police Department is making almost 800 drug arrests a year, and in the drug world, Nashua has gained a reputation for being a place where it is hard to sell heroin and fentanyl. In early 2016, I launched the multi-disciplinary Mayor's Opioid Task Force, which is working with Jan Veluc and the Nashua Prevention Coalition to strengthen prevention efforts with our young people, and working with Greater Nashua Mental Health and others to expand treatment options. Just last month, we started a pilot program of peer-to-peer recovery coaching with Jessica Parnell and Revive. Revive is a new recovery center opened last summer at 263 Main Street. Peer-to-peer coaching improves success rates for people who are in recovery but still in the grips of the serious brain disease of addiction, which lasts for a long time after sobriety is achieved. But we cannot be complacent. Harbor Homes is providing medical detox and treatment options, including medication-assisted treatment for those reporting to Safe Stations. But these treatment programs cost a lot of money and are currently causing Harbor Homes to suffer a deficit of $400,000. Dave Mara, the state's Drug Czar, attended our Safe Stations breakfast last week and understands the importance of continuing the Safe Stations Program. More support, though, from the state of New Hampshire and from Medicaid would be a huge help. Another goal of mine has been to include many, more citizens in our city government. I've been able to appoint dozens of people to city boards and commissions, from the planning board to the Cultural Connections Committee. Last year, I announced that we would be offering a new Nashua City Academy, a multi-week course which educates Nashua citizens about city government. I am happy to say that we graduated our first class last June, and we are looking forward to welcoming 50 new citizen students to our second City Academy next month. Nashua is also making smart and strategic investments in our infrastructure, investments that benefit everyone in every neighborhood. We need and deserve an infrastructure that is efficient, effective, and accountable to the people who pay for it. To maintain the quality of life we deserve, let's repair the streets and roads, especially those that are crumbling, and modernize our sewage treatment plant and sewers. But we must do this in a smart, strategic way so that we get what we pay for. Now, potholes have been a serious problem this winter, not just in Nashua, though. Some of our streets, like Kinsley, are in bad shape. The combination of record cold temperatures, repeated freezing and thawing, a lot of rain, and the poor conditions of some of our streets have all contributed. The street department is sending out numerous crews to fill potholes, and they have filled over 2,000 potholes so far this winter. Before I became mayor, Nashua was paving about five to six miles of its 300 miles of streets each year. However, in order to help Nashuans from all neighborhoods, the Board of Aldermen and I adopted a $37.5 million paving plan of action. Over five years, we will dramatically improve the condition of Nashua's streets. We have rated the condition of all streets using real data and fact-based analysis. In 2007, 17, we crack sealed and paved 30 miles of streets. In 2018, we will do a lot more. We've also made major improvements to the sewage treatment plant after years of neglect, and we will be rebuilding the red-listed bridge on Canal Street near BAE. For the residents in the Broad Street neighborhood and for drivers throughout Nashua, this last July, we completed the improvements at intersections at Sharon Ave and Whole Foods Turnpike Plaza. Enabling left turns has eliminated unnecessary waiting time and has made traveling around the city easier for thousands of Nashuans. In the South End, especially at Exit 1, we have a problem with traffic congestion. For residents of South Nashua, we have initiated discussions with the state DOT about the possibility of new on-and-off ramps at the southbound lane of the Everett Turnpike at Gateway Hills. This is definitely a long-term project, but we are committed to making it a reality in order to improve travel times for Nashuans in our South End. Since I have been mayor, we have passed two budgets which have maintained and improved the quality of schools and other services while keeping tax increases under 3%. And we have done this despite a $2 million increase in the city's mandatory contribution to the state pension system and other major increases in fixed costs. But I want our budgeting to be accountable to the people who pay the bills, so I am announcing tonight that this year, I will be proposing the FY19 budget in mid-March rather than mid-May, two months earlier than city budgets of a few years ago. This will give the Board of Aldermen, the Budget Committee, and Chairman Rick Dowd, and our citizens additional time to examine and comment on our budget. The budget I will be proposing will be fiscally responsible and will maintain the quality of services that Nashua has relied on. However, one of our biggest budgetary challenges remains downshifting by the state legislature. It seems that whenever there is a budget problem or a wish at the state level, the solution is to impose additional costs on or reduce revenues to cities and towns. We call this downshifting. In order to control property taxes, the state government needs to be a better partner of cities and towns. There are many examples that I could give you, but a big one is the cost of pensions for city employees. The city's contribution to the state mandated and run pension fund has increased from $8 million to $10, to $23 million over 10 years. The main causes of this increase are mismanagement of the system and recapitalization of the pension fund, and the state's decision to breach its commitment to pay 35% of the annual pension costs for municipal workers. There was just a bill in the legislature known as HB413 to partially make good on the state's obligation by funding 15%, as opposed to the original promise of 35% of municipal pension costs. This initiative would save Nashua taxpayers $3.4 million per year. However, the House voted by six votes to kill the 15% initiative, and then a reconsideration motion failed by a single vote. A majority of Nashua legislators voted for HB13, but I'm sorry to say that some of our own representatives voted against the bill. The defeat of the 15% initiative means higher property taxes for all Nashuans. Now, we cannot talk about the state of our city without recognizing the importance of our schools. Families must have confidence that their kids will get the education they need to succeed in life, and employers need to know that graduates have the skills to perform in the workplace. Last fall, we opened full-day kindergarten for five-year-olds at all 12 elementary schools, and our students are excelling. In Nashua, we have more students acing advanced placement courses than in any other community in New Hampshire. Elm Street Middle School teams have dominated the recent New Hampshire Robotics Tournament. The New Hampshire South Math Team has been the New Hampshire Smash Champ for nine years in a row. Main Dunstable's Destination Imagination Team, an after-school activity that builds STEM skills, advanced to the global finals, and Nashua South won Public TV's quiz show, The Granite State Challenge, for the second year in a row. And fortunately, we also have new direction, stability, and purpose in our schools. Two years ago, our top three professional school leaders departed, leaving those vital positions vacant. We now have Dr. Jamal Mosley in place for at least the next four years. Dr. Mosley is bringing strong leadership and direction to our schools, and I am confident that he will take our schools to new heights. But we have a chance to take another critical step in ensuring excellent education for every student in every school, a four-years teacher's contract which makes significant progress towards fairly paying our teachers for the critical work they do in our classrooms. This contract will help stem the ongoing outmigration of trained seasoned teachers to neighboring school districts like Hollis Brookline, Amherst, and even Manchester for the higher pay those districts offer to mid-career teachers. We're improving our school infrastructure, too. We've invested in school safety. We completed extensive renovations at Sunset Heights. In September, we cut the ribbon for the new playground, for a new playground at Dr. Crisp. Our youth soccer and lacrosse leagues continue to grow, and we are actively working to meet the demand. For young athletes, we completed two new fields near Charlotte Elementary, and we will finish a third field later this year. For our young people, one goal is to create opportunities and expand horizons. A summer job can be a transformative experience. So I'm announcing tonight that this coming summer, we are beginning a new city youth jobs program for Nashua High School students. Students will work in a variety of city departments, from economic development to public works. These young people will learn skills and experience which will help prepare them for college, career, and adulthood. I'm also announcing tonight that for our kids and families, we will be holding our first Family Day at Holman Stadium this coming May 12. Varsity baseball players from Nashua North and South will hold a clinic on the fields at Coach's Corner for all the kids who may want to play baseball. Combined with a family picnic, this should be a wonderful day at Holman Stadium. Now, improving educational results for our kids, strengthening and empowering our neighborhoods will not only improve the quality of life for many Nashuans, but it will also help make Nashua more resistant to the scourge of opioids and more able to meet the needs of our businesses for well-educated, well-prepared new employees. In my last State of the City address, I told you that we were going to form a partnership to meet a growing need: hungry kids who go home without knowing if they will have enough to eat. Now, fact-based research shows that feeding hungry kids gets results because hungry kids cannot learn effectively. So in our Crown Hill neighborhood, home of the Dr. Crisp Elementary School, we formed a partnership, including the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter, Southern New Hampshire Services, Dr. Crisp, the Salvation Army, N68 Hours of Hunger, and others. We called our program Nashua Meals for Kids. In July, we began providing meals at different sites in Crown Hill. By the end of the summer, we had served over 7,000 meals to neighborhood children. Meals for Kids now is ongoing and is helping with evening and weekend meals. Also, last fall, we opened our Arlington Street Community Center at the freshly painted, carpeted, and furnished Crown Hill Fire Station building located next to the Dr. Crisp School in one of our most diverse neighborhoods. The idea behind the center is to bring services that exist in the greater Nashua community into the neighborhood and closer to children and families. The community center was developed under the direction of the MBK Board, which includes representatives from many organizations: the Nashua School District, YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, the Adult Learning Center, Lamprey Health, United Way, the PD, Nashua PAL, Maverick Technical Institute, and various city departments, Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright, and many others. Our building and risk departments also dedicated many hours to this project. The community center is already a big success and alive with activity. An early learning readiness program, teen leadership groups, yoga, storytime and puppet shows, ESL classes, and more are taking place. And our aim is to bring about a healthier, better-connected, more striving and thriving Crown Hill neighborhood with stronger families and improved student learning. In our inclusive city, one of the most pressing concerns for our seniors is property taxes. I am proud to say that Nashua is New Hampshire's most age-friendly community and our most diverse. We are for the largest senior property tax credit of all the cities and towns of our state. The city provides strong support to our senior activity center. Alderwoman June Karen and City Treasurer David Fredette are active on the board of the center. And I am looking forward to our first senior cookout, which the city and the senior center will be holding at Holman Stadium this coming summer. For the young people and the young families who are building the Nashua of the future, we need additional housing options. Certainly, many in the millennial generation will find the hundreds of new apartments in the downtown an attractive choice. However, we also need more options for those young families who want to own a home but cannot afford the $400,000 or $500,000 price tag carried by many of Nashua's new single-family homes. We need to encourage the development of smaller homes of 1,000 to 1,200 square feet on smaller lots that our young families can afford. Right now, such smaller houses are being built under the density bonuses which are awarded to senior-only, age-restricted housing. Tonight, I am announcing that I will propose to the Board of Aldermen and to the Planning and Economic Development Committee chaired by Alderwoman Malize Golia, a change in our zoning to allow people of all ages, including young families, to buy in density bonus developments of smaller homes. We are working to bring commuter rail to Nashua. Our preferred approach has been the proposed Capitol Corridor Project. Our preferred approach has been the proposed Capitol Corridor Project, which would have established another transportation link to Boston, the engine of New England's economy. Amazon's requirement of accessible commuter rail in its search-for-second headquarters shows how important rail is to 21st-century businesses and their employees. However, in 2016, the legislature stopped the Capitol Corridor Project. But here in Nashua, we did not give up. We began working with the Boston Surface Rail Company to try to establish a privately-funded and privately-run commuter rail service to Lowell and Boston. There are a number of obstacles to be overcome, but we are optimistic that this P3 could bring commuter rail service to Nashua. After all, the Nashua-Manchester region generates 35.1% of New Hampshire's gross state product. Investing in Nashua's infrastructure will help build the state's economy, make New Hampshire more attractive to employers, and grow state tax revenues. Our message to the legislature and to the state of New Hampshire should be, paraphrasing Jerry Maguire, "Help us help you." I also want to focus, before I conclude, on our green initiatives. Last year, the city completed the buyout of the lease of the Mine Falls Dam, a 3-megawatt source of renewable energy, and we also own the 1-megawatt Jackson Falls Dam. Together, these dams will generate $5 million in profit for the city over the next 10 years. We have completed the conversion of streetlights to LED, which will save another $2.5 million in energy costs over 10 years. And just a few months back, we put eight new compressed natural gas buses on the road. These CNG buses will transport over 500,000 riders per year, and they produce 20% to 30% less greenhouse gas emissions than our old diesel buses. We have formed an Energy Committee whose engaged and committed members are working to develop green initiatives for the city, and we expect to bring forward some exciting opportunities during this coming year. Well, the progress that we have made is ultimately because of you, the citizens of Nashua, who have been active and involved. Thank you for joining boards and commissions, for participating in town hall meetings and coffee hours, for sharing your dreams and ambitions for our community, for attending downtown music festivals and other events, and patronizing downtown restaurants and businesses, for pitching in during cleanup days in Mine Falls Park and along the rail trail and the Riverwalk. Thank you for putting on Santa in the Park, for attending the City Academy, for volunteering or contributing to local nonprofits. Thank you to all for your dedication to Nashua and for believing in the power of Nashua's potential. And thank you to the 2,800 city employees who work every day to make Nashua a great city: our firefighters, police officers, and teachers, the employees who fix, patch, and plow our streets, collect the trash and recycling, care for our parks, playgrounds, and green spaces, and the staff who work in public health, in the public library, and in City Hall. I look forward to working with all of you, with thousands of Nashua residents and employees, to continue building a city that is welcoming and warm-hearted, inclusive and innovative, compassionate, and confident. Thank you to the great city of Nashua, and God bless.
Thank you, Mayor Donches. Is there a motion? Alderman Wilshire? Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And by a vote of significantly more than 15 to nothing, we're adjourned at 7:34.